City of Salem, the City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in council chambers on May 28, 2025, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the matters of the fiscal year 2026 operating budget and capital improvement plans for the following departments. We have inspectional services, which includes electrical, public property, and the health department, and also the transportation department here tonight. In attendance, we have from the Administration and Finance Committee, Councillors Davis, Councillor Stott, Councillor Harvey, and Councillor Watsonfeld. And from the Committee of the Whole, we have Councillor Cohen, Councillor Hopworth, Councillor Jurislaw, Councillor Marcello, and Councillor Pozniewski. And also with us tonight is John Giardi, our city electrician, Vrula Orfanos, Inspection Services, Dave Greenbaum, our health agent, and Christina Hodge, the Deputy Director of Transportation. Notice of this meeting was posted on May 8, 2025, at 2:39 PM. And welcome, everyone, to our Administration and Finance Committee Budget Hearing. These meetings for our budget hearings will run through mid-June. The agendas are posted on the city calendar, which include a link to the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget, and also other financial information, including the Fiscal Year 26 Budget in Brief, which is really helpful. It's an overview of budget priorities, timelines, breakdown of revenue sources, and where your money goes. And also, these budget hearings are a great opportunity to learn about what each department's do, their vision for the department moving forward. And if anyone from the public has any questions regarding the budget hearings, please feel free to email me at amercal@salem.com. And as always, I want to thank Anna Friedman and our Finance Director, and our city's finance team for all their hard work on the proposed budget. And we will hear from each department tonight. We will go through the budget first, and after we vote, then we will discuss the capital improvement plans for the department, looking at the five-year capital plan, all funds. And we are going to start tonight with John Giardi, our city electrician. And this is Section 17, and the budget summary is on page 445. And welcome, Mr. Giardi. And I'll just ask everyone to speak right into the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Chair Lady, and city councillors, for having me here again another year. Can you believe another year has passed already? Wow. Okay. So, in the regular post of the budget, pretty much everything is staying the same, except for a couple of line differences in maintenance traffic signals. That one increased because of the increase in prices and inflation, so that had to be brought up. We've had a little altercation in regards to street lighting. We had increased that a little bit because of the tariffs and inflation, so that brought that up. The salaries went up a little bit, and thank you very much to the mayor and to the city councils, all of you appreciate it. This is the first time the City of Salem Electoral Department will be fully staffed, only for probably about a week, because I have one gentleman that's going to be going out with a knee operation, so I'm back one guy again. But the good news in that is that this person we got not too long ago is a wiring inspector and is capable of working outside as well as inside in regards to doing electrical work. So, that helps us out a lot. What we've been doing is we've upgraded the Cobra Heads on Jefferson Avenue. That street is fully changed out. We have upgraded all of incoming Highland Avenue to Mandy's Pizza, you know, from the Lynn Line all the way to Mandy's Pizza. That has no all lumineers, and we are going to go outbound from Mandy's Pizza all the way back to Lynn. That should be done, I'd say, within two weeks to three weeks. Lafayette Street will also receive new Cobra Head lighting. We're trying to upgrade all our main arteries, then we'll work over to the side streets, because some of those will have to be replaced, too. We've hit the 10-year mark in regards to the luminous life, so that's why we're replacing them. So, the main arteries were the weakest, so we wanted to make sure that those were lit We've been assisting Salem PD in regards to installing cameras all over the city, as you well know, you see them all over the place, so we've been helping the PD on that. We've been working with the Historical Society and the city council, some of you guys have seen what we're doing, and it looks like we may have a common fixture that everybody can agree upon, you know, so it sounds pretty good. And that'll take a while to get the lumineers, but at least we have everybody on the same page, so that's a good thing. We've been working nonstop on click-fix issues, you know that, everybody calls in, we keep going, we're getting there. Now that we have a full staff, pretty much, you know, the complaints will start to drop down from the Electoral Department, hopefully. And we have a lot going on in the inspectional services part. Lee Ford Terrace is building 125 units. Canal Street has got 280 units. Grove Street's got 120 units. And one of the things we're doing also is we're patching up our fire alarm system, which was neglected for a while. We had a hard time keeping up with that because of the shortage of manpower, but we have it, thanks to you guys, so we're working on that, too, so we're gaining. Does anybody have any questions they would like to ask me in regards to?
Councillor Watsonfeld? Thank you, Chair Merkel. I have a question just with regards to conversations we've had previously about stockpiling up some of poles and lamps that are in high demand and need replacement. I know we saw, over the last couple of years, really severe delays with shipping and everything around getting the things we need in order to make timely fixes. Have you guys taken any action on building up that stockpile we've talked about previously? And if so, how does that show up in this budget?
Yes, we have, you know, tried to build it up. Like, I've just talked to Finance, as a matter of fact, today, and Mr. Delaney, you know, we've ordered some more fixtures to keep up with that, and that's part of the budget, the $40,000, $45,000, you know, it's in the budget.
Is that under the maintenance lighting, then?
Yes, yeah, street lighting, yep. 5254, I believe, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And are you going to continue to try and expand that stockpile as well, or do you feel you've got a sustaining account that you're comfortable with?
No, we do not have enough. We need to purchase more lumineers, and that's why I'm right on this, because we have probably 1,500 street lights that we have to address, so. And we've only, we're touching the main streets, so then when we start breaking down to the side streets. But the good news is the side street ones are a little bit cheaper than the other ones. Right now, the price is holding fairly stable, so that's why I want to get as much done, or as much equipment as we can get, while the price is still stable.
And is that inclusive of the varied kinds of poles and lamps that we have in town as well, so there's different ones, you know, on the corner of sort of Summer and Chestnut than there are down in other neighborhoods?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. I have one more question. Have you all done any studies or investigation in the past of the cost of converting the lighting on the Salem Common to, not the poles per se, but the tree displays and the Hubie Halloween displays to solar?
Well, we've talked about the Hubie Halloween project. It was probably like, some people weren't happy with it because of the way that the timing was, you know, how many hours a day it was on, and the brilliancy. So, I think we talked about having a meeting, you know, before this gets started, and see where we're going to go, how long we're going to keep them on, how many days we're going to keep them on, so we're willing to work with everybody, so.
Yeah, that's definitely an important issue. It's a little bit different than the one that I'm asking about, which is to see if you would be, if you've ever considered changing all of the, sort of the Christmas lights that are on the trees year-round, at least in that front apron. Of course, when I was a kid, they were all the way around.
That's hot.
Yeah, and if there was a solar equivalent that would be, I don't know, even less expensive for the city in the long term?
We, to be honest, we haven't thought about solar lights, you know, for the Common in regards to Christmas lighting, but that's certainly something to look at. I mean, I'm willing to take a look at it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, and I'm just curious, because I think it probably, I think that it is important that they are on, they stay on, right? But do you think that if, that they're probably a large maintenance?
I certainly agree with you from a business standpoint. I know the merchants all love it, I know the people all like them when they come into the town. It's really nice, you know, when it's done, so.
Thank you.
We'll do our best. We maybe, we should be able to do a little better this year and year, we have the staff, so.
Great, thanks, John.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Councillor Marcello?
Thank you, Chair. John, I just want to say thank you for focusing on Jefferson Avenue with all the safety concerns there. I appreciate that the lights, the new lights went in, and people actually have noticed it, so that's always a good thing.
That's good.
Yeah, and also, the crosswalks on Broad Street, when we did that change out also, that was extremely helpful, so just appreciate it.
Another good thing is On Street, that is coming.
Yep.
Okay, because I talked to Ray Jordan.
Would you have a date?
Right after July 4th, we should be able to move on that, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee. Thank you, you're very responsive.
Thanks, yeah.
And it seems, for some reason, that Raleigh Plaza and Ocean and Lafayette are always a problem, so I know you're on that every time a phone call is made. And I also wanted to, you know, express gratitude for the job that Mark has done over the years.
He'll appreciate that.
I think a lot of people don't realize, I only did when I was in the industry, that almost every wiring inspector had him as a teacher in Northeastern.
Yeah.
They all know him, so, and he really knows his stuff, so I just want to thank you and your department for all your good.
Thank you very much, he'll appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I also want to say thank you for your longtime service to the city, and you and your team. It is, it's a huge job, I can't imagine the C Click Fix, I'm sure it's nonstop, and it's just kind of an everything job, so you are very much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Councillor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I would just like to also express my gratitude for all your help over the years. I think maybe we'll have a standing date over at school in North, and look at those.
We have another meeting, okay, pretty soon, yeah.
No, but I appreciate your willingness and your very quick response to concerns, and really wanting to get in and figure out the issues, so thank you for all that help over here.
Thank you, Councillor, yeah.
And with that, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the Electric Department budget. Personnel line item of $532,688, expenditure line item of $482,542, for a total department budget of $1,015,230. Slightly different than our books.
I second it.
Councillor Stott moves to recommend the approval of the Electrical Department's personnel budget in the amount of $532,688. The expenditures budget in the amount of $482,542, for a department total of $1,015,230, seconded by Councillor Harvey. All in favor? Let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The matter carries. Okay, so next, we have the capital improvement plans for the Electrical Department. That is back on the larger tab 7, and it is page 228. And as a reminder, we discuss these after the applicable departments, and we vote on them in total on June 11th, the funding sources that do require a council vote. And we're looking at the five-year capital plan, all funds. Okay, and would you like to highlight any?
Elaborate, sure.
Okay.
All right. On the first line, okay, $10,000 for ADA walk signal buttons, you know, to be upgraded in certain locations. The biggest location we need to do now is New Derby Street and Lafayette Street, okay? Those ADA buttons, what you see on the corner of the post, they're $600 apiece. I think they went up to $7,000, so, just sort of, and I get really aggravated when somebody damages them, because that's a lot of money, you know? So, we'll be doing probably two intersections, that's one, so we'll take whatever we have left and move on to another one that doesn't have them. And the second line item is for $60,000 for an F-150 Lightning Pickup Truck for the Electrical Department. Basically, that'll serve two purposes. The wiring inspector uses it, and we'll use it for bringing equipment to certain sites, you know, to be able to do work, so it's got a dual purpose. And the third line is $30,000. It's in addition to Phase 3 Smart Signal Program. We had $100,000, we needed 30 more thousand to be able to complete the third phase, which will be Derby and Congress Street up to Hawthorne Boulevard, you know, at the corner of the hotel and Essex Street. So then, $175,000 is for street light painting. That's, I don't know if that's going to be anywhere near what we need, but I think Mr. Delaney and myself talked about it, and that was the starting figure that we come up with, is $175,000. If it comes up less, I hope, but I don't know. We'll see, we'll try our best.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? No? Okay, well, again, I want to thank you very much and your department.
You're welcome. Thank you, councillors, for all the work you guys do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
And next, we'll have Inspection Services.
Councillor?
Yes?
Can I ask for a brief recess? We just have to confirm something on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Five-minute recess?
Motion for a five-minute recess.
Thank you. We'll be back. Welcome back, everyone. We are moving on to Inspection Services, and thank you, Ms. Orfanos, for being with us. This is in Section 15, and the budget summary is on page 422. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. So, we can start with some of the items we've been doing. So, we have, thank you to the council that I have my new code enforcement slash building inspector, who's been doing a phenomenal job and a great asset to our department, because we are able to reach out to more complaints or things that we're seeing and be more attentive to it. So, it's easy to go to a first complaint and then not be able to go back, because you just get sidetracked, we have so much going on, so he definitely focuses on that. And I'm hopeful that you've seen some of the improvements that we're cleaning up some sites and things that, you know, for code enforcement, or attending to calls that we're getting. So, that's one of the things that I really appreciate, and it's a definitely, I do have a full staff between facilities and my inspectors. And as you see, we have a lot of projects going on, as John Giardi mentioned, and I won't mention those. We have a lot of units being built, a lot of new projects coming into the path, and also now, we have a new addition with our codes, building addition is changing, we have, you know, with, right now, the new code, building code is a 10th edition that's coming in, so we have a lot of changes, so we have to focus on that with inspectors and work with other departments in the state also. So, we have a lot going on, so I appreciate any assistance that we've gotten with our department. So, we're focusing on permits, we're trying to put new FAQs, hopefully, on our new website. We were just talking about it last week. So, when people are doing permits, they can understand a little bit more why you have to do something or what it requires, and so that's our new focus, and that's what our goal is for permits, make it a little easier, because if I was on the other side applying for a permit, I would want to stand as a constituent. A lot of contractors should know, because they go through a licensing process, so that's a goal, to make it a little easier. We want to educate more people, too, we're trying to figure out another way to do it. We had a homeowner that, the contract that she got, she was not, we're trying to educate people to come to us, and we can kind of guide you on a permanent process for the homeowner not to do the permit if they hire somebody. So, that's like some of our goals with permanent online services that we'd like to reach. Trying to think, as far as improvements, we're trying to do some within City Hall, Cross Street at the Annex. Mike Crowns, the facilities director, has been wonderful, trying to get some projects done. We're trying to renovate on the third floor with the treasurers and just do some different add-ons there. Hopefully, we've got some prices. We are going to start the cameras at the Community Life Center, that's coming up soon. We just got a new rebid because of last year's bids, even though we had the money allocated, so we're going to be getting that hopefully started sooner than later, I'm hoping, the next few weeks. Trying to think of projects. If I'm missing any, Mayor, that you can think of. I think that's it for the bigger projects. Permits have been up, we've had a lot of permits come in, fees, and thank you for increasing that, because that's assisted a lot in not putting the burden on the taxpayers by putting it on the bigger projects especially, because we're out there a lot, there's a lot of time, a lot of review. Energy Code, that was a word I was trying to think of earlier, so with the Energy Code, there's just a lot of changes. And we're going to be having a new add-on, short-term rentals, we're going to be having to do annual inspections on those, so those are going to go along with health. Those are going to be called the 110 inspections, so that's going to be added on to the annual inspections besides the other ones that we have to do. I know I'm rambling. Any questions, if I'm missing anything? We've had some increases on the budget. Utilities, we've, up and down, we were trying to foresee, and we talked to Sustainability to see, you know, what they're forecasting on some of those. I don't think we've asked a lot of increases on much postage, we went a little bit down, we don't have an election year, we're keeping an eye on that. What else? Oh, yes, so we did shift on that, on contractual services, because with Otis, the elevator, that's going to be coming to us, that was down at DPS, so that way, you see an increase of $18,000 there. And that's along with the other monitoring, the fire alarm, the panic buttons, those are all the contracted services there. But we are going to be taking over the elevator that DPS was doing, that's the increase on that for maintenance. Let's see, office supplies, I think we stayed the same. There was an increase, I know, because I have the new inspector on there for safety gear, so there was an ask on that for $1,000 for our annual safety gear that we need to get. Printing, we stayed the same. Custodia Supplies pretty much was fine. Our travel, we have to do for our continuing education in order to keep our certification to the state, so that I'm in travel. It's increased a little bit, because I have my new inspector on there, so that's the only time you're seeing the increases. And then I have my sailors and weights and measures, I didn't do any increases on that, and he's doing a wonderful job, actually, so I'm glad to have him on board. And I think pretty much our fixed costs are pretty much at the point, we might have asked very minor increases on that. I don't know if there's any questions? Anything I didn't touch on?
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councillor Marcello?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you, you're extremely responsive, and you explain things really well, which is very helpful when I have questions. And also, I think you're doing a great job, I have to say. I think I see a difference in the department since you've taken over, and, yeah, I just think that things are more consistent, consistently inspected, consistently handled. I do have one question. How are the inspections for the outdoor dining going?
We just added those. So far, they've been putting their applications in, there's a couple, Gail just added this week, so we haven't had any complaints, we have had none that have to change anything. We're working with DPS, because they put in Barrios, so Katie called me just to check on one, one was a little bit bigger at Barrios, and she, Gail went right out there, they do have the three spaces that they were approved, so if anybody sees any, just call us. Gail and Mike, actually, the new inspector, is doing some enforcement on these. We haven't encountered any problems, so I'm hopeful.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping that it would be easier through year one, that things would get easier from year to year, that people know what to do and know how to build the things and how to set them up, so I'm hoping that's true.
I'm hopeful, too.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the compliments.
Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee. Yeah, I wanted to follow up on the outdoor dining, because Councillor Marcello and myself were part of like the gang that went out and did kind of educational inspections, but it's really on you, because, you know, when we find something, it's really on you, and you've been really diligent, you and your staff. On Monday, we're going to be voting on the sidewalk for the snow increase fine.
Oh, great, yes.
You know, I know, it's something that you and Councillor Stott and I have talked about, and seems to be a consensus that that will help, and appreciate that you have this plan to proactively deal with the, you know, bad actors. Regarding the Energy Code, the specialized code and the stretch code, could you talk about how you work with Director Duffy? I mean, I'm assuming that he's involved with some of that?
Yep.
Because it could be confusing to some developers or property owners.
Right, so they have to submit with the new Energy Code all their documents, so it comes in with our building permit. Neil Duffy will be more on the planning department when he has to put, you know, what they need to do. If we have questions, we'll work together, if there's any education going on, we definitely work together. It's great, we have a good team that we can work together with that. But I do have Gail, who's wonderful, my inspector, who's definitely on top of the Energy Code to make sure they're getting everything in there, so we don't miss anything, so there's a lot, a lot of stuff that.
It must be great having a resiliency architect as an inspector.
Yes.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, we appreciate it, thank you. I do have a great team, I do want to say.
Councillor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, and yes, thank you, Vrula, for all your attentiveness, especially in the bridge treatment area. You've been really on top of it, and I really appreciate all you do and your ability to communicate, so thank you for that. One question, just with regards to the oil cost for 93 Washington Street, which is at $22,000. I'm curious if there's been any research about what it would take to convert the building to gas. I know it's a historic building with, you know, aging infrastructure, but given $22,000 is a relatively higher number than it would be if it were gas or other sustainable heating source, I'd be curious to see if, down the line, if that's ever anywhere on the list for capital improvement.
We have talked a little bit about, you know, with Neil and also with Mike Crowns, the new facilities director, so we are trying to look at different avenues, what would be better for cleaner energy and savings, if it would be worth, you know, changing something over. So, I will make sure to make, you know, that they look at this and see if it'd be worth going that route.
Yeah, I'm just, Councillor Cohen has just reminded me, we can't do Yeah, I'm just, Councilor Cohen has reminded me, we can't do gas, given our municipal building code. But I will, or not do, but ordinance.
Yeah.
But the split.
But like, you know, for energy, for sustainability, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
Look at that.
I just, it's incredible, the cost of oil, and it's, we know how unsustainable it really is. So just curious, as you look ahead, five, 10 years, whatever the case may be.
Yep. So we've had talks with Neil, sustainability, and that with Mike Kraun being in as my facilities director, will be definitely worth looking into.
You're welcome. Thank you. I was also wondering, too, it seems to be an increase in short-term rentals. Does that use more staff time? And how is, how is, you know, that landing, you know, trying to keep up on all the short-term rentals? And, yeah, some of your feedback on that as well?
Yep. It will be increasing a lot of our staff time. Like I said, now in our new building code, which is effective July 1st, we will be inspecting every short-term rental annually. And I was talking to Dave, we have to figure out a system that we can do together, and they'll renew at the same time. So that's going to take a lot of staff time. So you add in whatever amount, we have 400, say, short-term rentals that you have to do annually, if that's the amount that come in. We'll have to go back out and inspect them every year. So we're going to have to try and figure out how we're going to fit that into the schedule.
No, that is, it's going to be, you're a busy department. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay. And I also want to say thank you to you and your department for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I can't be remiss to also say my thanks. Appreciate your responsiveness. Notice all the ward counselors are very appreciative of your clear communication and responsiveness, because we probably are in connection with you the most. But also, along with that, just listening to what your goals are for the department around improving the process as a whole, I really appreciate that, because you're looking at it more as like, instead of just the individual problems that you're seeing, but how can you improve the overall process and frustrations that some have. So that's very much appreciative. Because zoning and like what you do is just very confusing to the average person, me, myself included. So thank you for looking at it kind of in that angle of how to make things easier. Very much appreciate it. So with that said, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the Building Plumbing Glass and Gas Inspector Personnel Budget Line Item of $862,499, and Expenditure Line Item of $67,840 for a department total of $930,399.
Second it.
Councilor Stott moves to recommend approval of the plumbing, the Building Plumbing Gas and Inspector's Personnel Budget of $862,499, and Expenditures Budget of $67,840 for a department total of $930,339, seconded by Councilor Harvey. All in favor? Okay. Let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The matter carries. Okay, and we do have some capital improvement plan matters. That is, again... Oh, I was doing the CIP first and then moving on to the Public Property Fixed Costs and the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I'm happy to do it either way. Doesn't matter to me. Okay. Okay, so, yeah, we'll move on to, is that okay? Okay, yep, we're going to tab And it is page 228, on tab seven towards the front, and it's under Building. So, because these are the items for inspectional services and public property. Would you like to offer any feedback?
So for the office relocation, like I mentioned earlier, at the annex, we are asking for the $30,000 to relocate some of the offices with treasurers, or it might be if we need more space, if somebody needed to move over. So that's what that is for. And then we have for the earmark, for the on-point building, the 1 million there that, we're requesting that federally. Anna's assisting me with that. Yeah. And then for security alarms, it and some upgrades, the $25,000. You know, we're trying to always keep up with all the security measures, like we've had the key, and then the panic buttons. So we're trying to keep up with that. I think that's it. We didn't put too much in the capital improvement.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I was just curious about the resource on point building. You know, we talked about that last year. So in our book, the state and/or federal earmark, but it sounds like it's federal. So I just didn't know there was any additional hope that can be provided on that.
So we've put in for requests for congressionally directed spending in the past, which is not something that's been available this year. So we're going to hopefully pursue it in a future year, or in a future state's other funding opportunity. But right now, not super optimistic about the ability to get earmark funds for capital projects like this. We're going to keep trying to plan for it, or identify other grant funding opportunities. The project is designed. Yeah, it's completing design through local ARPA funds and dollars that we've allocated towards it. This is, the goal is to refurbish the building for the purposes of relocating the Parent Information Center out of the Collins Middle School basement, and also providing some space for the Children's Alliance and community partners to have an actual building in the community for family resources.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, so we have two expenditure items to go over tonight. Public property fixed costs and zoning board of appeals. We'll start with the public property fixed costs, back in Section 15, and it's Any comments on this before we go down it from Ms. Fraven? No? Okay, so this is the budget summary for the public property and fixed cost expenditures only. Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Public Property Fixed Cost Expenditures Department Total of $743,309.
Second it.
Councilor Stott, motions to approve the Public Property Fixed Cost Expenditures for a total amount of $743,309, seconded by Councilor Harvey. All in favor? Let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The matter carries. Next, we have on page 429, the next page, the Zoning Board of Appeals, expenditures only. Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals Expenditures Department Total of $1,200.
Councilor Stott moves to recommend approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals Expenditures in a total amount of $1,200, seconded by Councilor Harvey. All in favor? Let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The matter carries. And thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you, everyone, for supporting my team and doing our, being able to do our work. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And next, we'll be moving on to the Transportation Department, which is Section 8. And the budget summary is on page 341. And we have joining us Christina Hodge, Deputy Director of Transportation. And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. This chair is a lot more comfortable than the bench, so I appreciate moving on over. So yes, I'm Christina Hodge. I'm the Assistant Transportation Director here in the Department of Transportation. And I always err on the side of being overly prepared. So I will be reading a script to hopefully cover everything, and then happy to answer questions after. So just a little introduction to the Department of Transportation, formerly known as the Traffic and Parking Department. The mission of the department is to provide an efficient, reliable, multimodal transportation system throughout the city of Salem, designing and building complete streets and accommodating all users, which includes but is not limited to pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and drivers, and to provide pleasant and secure parking services to residents, businesses, and visitors while maintaining courteous and helpful assistance to the general public. In addition to implementing various citywide transportation projects, we also oversee the Salem Skipper, which is the on-demand ride-share service, and the Blue Bikes Bike Share Program. The department is comprised of staff in the City Hall Annex, the parking office at One New Liberty Street, and parking enforcement. We are currently in the final stages of our Safe Streets For All Safety Action Plan, which will identify future infrastructure improvement projects citywide. We have continued to implement projects through our Bicycle Master Plan and Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. This year, we introduced the License Plate Recognition Software used for resident permit parking, and we are continuing to monitor and evaluate the administration of this program. Staffing levels have remained consistent, or constant as a whole. The FY26 budget reflects salary changes due to a few factors, such as AFSMI, contract negotiations, comp studies, COLA adjustment, and additional part-time staff that will be added around haunted happenings. Some other notable changes to the budget, some items that have changed include the increased electricity cost and reduced building and equipment maintenance allocation, which is based on spending trends for the last few years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee, and thank you for your good work sending out surveys for and against resident parking. I know it's a lot of work. Just wanted to touch base on the, I know Councilor Varela isn't here, but we're excited to someday move forward with Lafayette Street from West Ave to Marblehead in stages. And so I know you'll reach out to us when it's appropriate for us to have another community meeting. And thank you for all your work on that.
Yes, thank you. It's a busy department. Thank you for your work. Councilor Marcello?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for being here, Christina. You're doing a great job.
Thanks.
I want to start by saying I really appreciate the work that your department did on getting that light at Wilson and Jefferson. It's made a huge difference there. I think, I don't know if I've heard of any complaints yet. And then the only follow-up is any sort of side effects on the Little Side Streets that I know that we need to, we need to do some more data collection and all of that to understand how people are behaving now that there's a light there. But I think, just what I've seen, people are waiting for the light more. But again, I'm not there all the time. I just go through every now and then. I have a question for you. We're coming to the end of the year, so all, everyone should be on the new system for resident parking permits, right? How do you think that's going? How do you think the software and the whole system is going? And how do you think the enforcement is going? And what are you hearing from residents about the new, the new system and the guest passes and all of that?
Yeah, I'd say it's definitely been a learning curve. I mean, us included. It's a new software program that we had to transition all of our data into. Some of the data needed to be cleaned up, and it wasn't perfect transition. So that took a little bit of work on my staff's part, and I appreciate all the work they put into that. I know that there have been some complaints and confusion about the way the visitor passes work. We have definitely assisted folks via email, over the phone. The lack of access to either a phone or computer has been problematic for some older residents, or people that choose not to use technology very frequently. So we've been working with them both in the parking office and in the annex to sort of overcome those issues. But from a data point of view, you know, we're hoping that this is a cleaner system, so we can really take control of what was previously, you know, paper passes and visitor passes that were handed off to friends, and not really a really controllable system, where this is, at least you have to input your information. And it definitely helps our enforcement staff, as they're able to do their rounds a bit more quickly, since they can put the inputs in, they don't have to check every single dashboard. So I think, you know, now that we're entering our first, like a second full year of this program, we'll see, you know, especially with the October-only passes, it was our first rollout of that this previous year. So hopefully, people are more in the know. We have to field less questions about, I didn't get my hang tag in the mail. Our goal is to have it just be an automatic renewal, and people are aware. We'll still put out the campaigns of trying to remind folks that it's all an online platform. But, you know, understanding it was a totally new thing that we ventured into, and it, new things are confusing and challenging, and some people just fight change. I think all went well for the most part, yeah.
Yeah. I think anytime you change platforms on anything where there's data that has to move from one place to another, it's fraught. So, you know, it's just, it's just part of the process, I think. How, how do you think the enforcement numbers are looking? Are there, is the enforcement, is it higher?
I don't know that right now.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Harvey?
Thank you, Chair. A quick question in regards to the contracted services. The bike share operations and the ride share operations, it's $125,000. Does the city recoup anything from these?
No. Do you want to answer this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for the, for the bike share, that's the Blue Bike, Blue Bike Program. I'm not aware that we're recouping any revenues from the Blue Bike Program. Do you want to note there is a reduction that you see in the budget book? It's not a reduction in the program. Actually, worked with Dave Kucharowski and identified some available grant funds. So that program will still be, it's still at level service for that program, and we were able to utilize a grant to pay for a portion of that next year. And for the ride share, that is the Salem Skipper. And so there is additional revenue that comes in from Salem Skipper. There was, the city had hoped to sort of incrementally add on a local share for that program, but in the current, under current budget constraints, and related to the overall cost of the program, it didn't seem to sort of fit within the FY26 budget picture this year. So that's why that has been zeroed out.
One more question. I know when the, last year, when we allocated a bunch of money to the Skipper program, it involved other municipalities also. And have we looked at that as far as, are they putting in a different amount of money now? Or, I know that was kind of like a pilot program to find out if any other municipalities were actually going to contribute to the actual Skipper program.
Yeah, we have portions of Danvers and Beverly in the expanded zone, and they are contributing based on, I believe, the same proportions that they originally were. Week to week, the Salem service, Salem internal trips alone, it's really accounting for about 80% of the total system. So we do carry the brunt of the ridership. And I don't know if there was agreed to reevaluate. Yeah, it was, I don't think that there was going to be a reevaluation of the allocation of money, but I could check back in the original contract documents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? Councilor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. And thank you, Christina, for all that you're doing. I appreciate the transparency within the department and the willingness to have all conversations needed. My question was also about the Salem Skipper and the Skipper expansion, because it was about a year ago that that happened. Good to hear that we're still allocating about 80% to Salem. I'm curious, though, and I think there was an order in to kind of report back, and this could totally be a separate meeting, not expecting it to answer now, but the impacts of that. I'm more curious on the service levels for Salem residents. I've been hearing, it's just, it's all anecdotal, though, so that's why I'd love I've been hearing it's all anecdotal, though, so that's why I'd love to see the data, that the wait times for Salem residents specifically have just really shot up since that expansion. So I would just really love to be able to like dive into that data to see if it's -- if that 20% additional budget we get is worth it, and if those -- if rides are originating from Salem to the additional towns, just like overall, holistically, how that is benefiting for us as a city.
Thank you. Anything else from the counselors? Okay. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Department of Transportation Personnel Budget of $1,320,445, expenditure budget of $458,035 for department total, which when you add those two numbers up equals $1,778,480.
Second.
Counselor Stott moves to approve the Department of Transportation Personnel Budget in the amount of $1,320,445. The transportation expenditures in $458,035 for Transportation Department total of $1, Seconded by Counselor Harvey. All in favor? Let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The matter carries. And we will move on to our capital improvement plan, again, back in Tab 7, and it is page And would you like to comment on any of the items here or just start with questions?
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to walk us through every line item.
Thank you.
So Lafayette Street Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Improvements Phase 1, as Counselor Cohen mentioned a few moments ago. This would include Lafayette Street from West Ave down to Harborview Terrace. It would provide parking-protected bicycle lanes on the southbound side, and a painted buffered bike lane on the northbound side. We are still waiting for a Mastod decision on their Shared Streets and Spaces Grant. The application was submitted in January, and that would only partially fund part of the project, so this would be the remaining funds. Washington Square East at Boardman Raised Crosswalk, and we have met with Counselor Watson Felton this as well previously. This would include design plans that would be taken to construction-ready level for implementation. It would create a safer crossing from the neighborhood to the Salem Common and also introduce a form of traffic calming with a raised crosswalk. Permanent speed hump installations, I just wanted to note that this line should be titled Permanent Traffic Calming Installations. It's not just limited to speed humps, but it could include speed humps. And this would be creating permanent versions of our temporary traffic calming pilot projects. So then moving to traffic calming pilot programs, this introduces low-cost and sometimes temporary or seasonal installations as a pilot before ideally, and the plan is to create permanent installations once they have been tested and proven. For parking infrastructure improvements, EV and equipment installation maintenance, this includes surface parking lot improvements, repaving and/or restriping, EV chargers, meters, parking kiosks, et cetera. Congress Street Crosswalk or Harbor Walk, we would work with a consultant to design an accessible crosswalk on Congress Street to provide a formal link to the Harbor Walk on either side of Congress Street where there currently is none. Bicycle infrastructure design, implementation, and repairs or improvements. Continuing to carry out the Bicycle Master Plan and other bicycle infrastructure improvements through design and construction as well as repair existing project elements. Garage improvements, this speaks for itself, but annual repairs to keep Museum Place and South Harbor operational. Salem Street Sidewalk and Crosswalk Improvements. So this would be Salem Street behind the Salt and Stall School. Sidewalks to connect the school to the adjacent side streets on both sides of the street. Improve the crosswalk that currently leads to a driveway. And we intend on applying for CDBG funds. We would just need to work out the timing of that since funds are typically received in the fall, and we would hope to have construction during the summer when school is not impacted. Broad Street, Dalton Parkway, we resubmitted a request to the MPO under their Design Funding Pilot we previously submitted last year, and the project was not awarded, but now it's being reconsidered. And it is in the final draft, I believe, of the proposed MPO budget. And this would supply the required match for that project. Harmony Grove, this is over by the Salem Oil and Grease Development. This would create a crosswalk that connects the path that is being built at the development with the path that currently exists across the street. The first payment was received, and we're waiting on the second payment, which will be received prior to the issuance of their second building permit. Jefferson Jackson, we are currently pursuing a community one-stop grant to redesign this intersection, so that would be for the match. And then Webb and Essex, which is not in FY '26 but in the future years, this intersection would be redesigned and introduce compliant crosswalks, pedestrian ramps, an updated traffic signal, and potentially the removal of the channelized right-turn lane from Essex Street to Webb. We currently have survey completed for this intersection with a portion of the funds that were allocated, and the additional funds would cover the cost to bring the redesigned plans to construction level. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Watson Felton?
Thank you, Counselor Merkel. I'd like to just talk a little bit more about that Webb and Essex intersection and how the timing got agreed upon to push it out. Given all the issues we've had in the last handful of years there, I'm a little surprised to see that this project wouldn't actually be implemented for another number of years.
Yeah, I believe that the timing of that is subject to some of the benefits that were agreed to with the offshore wind power plant development. So leveraging some of those community benefit agreements and how that can tie into our project since it is really one of the only proximate locations that we could really use the improvements and the trucks, and everyone will have to go through there to utilize the site.
Have you considered any temporary program in the interim?
I don't believe there was anything temporary considered. We are trying to do what we can to move things along, at least having the survey is a huge help. That way, once a consultant can be brought onboard, we can pass the existing conditions off to them so that they can design. It is tricky that if we were to touch pretty much any ramp at that location, it would start a chain reaction of having to touch every single part of that intersection just because it is not up to code and all the accessible guidelines that are there today, and recognizing the signal equipment is antiquated. It provides challenges for a temporary fix.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Murcilla?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions. The Washington Square East, is that for the construction of that crosswalk or is it for design?
That would be to, I believe, bring it to construction-ready documents. But I may be misspeaking.
So it's not the actual construction? It's for?
We're just going to double-check. I know we have plans. They're not exactly 100% level, so that may also be including the construction fees.
Okay. Well, that's being looked up. The permanent traffic calming measures, where is that going to go? What do you have that targeted for?
So for this year, we are implementing permanent traffic calming in the Point Neighborhood. There's a series of four streets, I believe, Harbor, Dow, Levitt, Palmer. That might not be in the right order, but they have been -- that area has been identified preliminary as an area that hits a lot of the criteria for our Safe Streets for All Safety Action Plan. And the goal of the speed hump program was originally to take that we know that these items work. They slow traffic. There are proven safety measures for neighborhood streets. The goal was to eventually not have to do the pilot year and to just implement where we could permanent to remove sort of the waiting period, and then it takes out the seasonality of having to remove the humps in the winter portion of the year. So that is the goal for this year to hit. We're calling it the Point Zone of those four streets. So the plans, I was actually just reviewing them today. They're underway with Neighborways, our consulting group that we work with. So that would be for the construction.
Okay. And the fact that we're seeing zeros in subsequent years for that, is that just because you don't have a budget yet or what is that?
Yeah, that doesn't mean that it's going away. It just means that we don't know exactly what neighborhoods or streets or projects will be taken under in those future years, so it would be a guess, so.
Okay. All right. So I have a couple more months to advocate for Proctor Street, right? All right. What was that? Okay. And then do you have anything in mind for the pilot programs for this coming fiscal year?
For the pilot programs, I don't believe we were adding any new locations, but we were evaluating Rainbow Terrace, which was off of Raymond Road, if there were any impacts to people avoiding the speed hump locations. So we were just doing data collection last month with Lieutenant Tucker to see if the volumes have been impacted when we do have the pilot locations out. But otherwise, it would be a lot of the same ones that have been for previous years, that some of them are sort of legacy locations that happened when we still had the application based and not so much the ranking or priority system. So they're still staying in the pipeline. It is challenging with a lot of these locations where the sidewalk doesn't have much of a curb reveal, so going to a permanent implementation will be a little bit more work and quite challenging to make sure folks don't, like on Proctor Street, don't get onto the sidewalk to avoid having to go over a vertical device. So other than that, other than looking at Rainbow Terrace, I don't believe we were adding any other locations per se to the pipeline.
Okay. Did the speed humps go out yet for the season?
I don't believe DPS has put them out yet, but I sent the list and the plans to Ray and his crew. Now that street sweeping is finished, they have a little bit more time to allocate to the speed humps and the sign requests that we have to put through. But I am hoping they will go out soon, but that is subject to DPS's staff availability.
Yeah, I mean, it's time. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Harvey?
Thank you, Chair. In regards to the Washington Street Essex East, I should say, raised crosswalk, that $360,000, is that a number that we've already gotten, I should say, from contractors to do that, or is that a guesstimate?
I believe the number is somewhat preliminary based on the notes I have from Dave's initial request for this project. It notes that that's an estimate provided by a consultant. And so depending on the timing and, you know, once full procurement would be done for the elements of the project, it is possible that that number could go up just based on the current economics related to projects. But my understanding was that that was a preliminary number that was the best estimate that he had at the time when he made the request.
Counselor Watson Felton?
Yeah, just to follow up on that last question. What is the timeline then looking like for installation, because this is now a two-and-a-half year-long conversation?
I don't have that answer tonight. I apologize.
Thank you.
Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I just have more of a comment when it comes to planning of these. And the pilot program that I think we have, it's had its challenges, but we have kind of a rhythm going with them. And I think, I know I personally appreciate the concept of the pilot program, right? Like try something out, see if it works. But my struggles with it now are, well, what is the next step? Like how do we make these more permanent? So I would love to see, probably similar to Counselor Murcilla's comments about the line above that of the permanent traffic calming installations, like split that number up a little more evenly in future years so we can actually see the pilot moving to permanent each year. And then, you know, as the year gets closer for the next year, you can then partly take those funds and allocate them to specific projects within that line. But to see that we don't, I mean, just looking at this, it doesn't show that we have any future investment in permanent installations of these. It just says that we're invested in a pilot program. So to say that we truly support these projects and want to make them permanent, I can't increase the budget, but if I could, I would plan for those permanent items, like and say that we truly support those.
Ms. Mayor Pangallo?
Thanks. So we do support them. The five-year plan is shown as a plan only. It's not a commitment of funds or any obligation like that. I will say, you know, we're also waiting on the conclusion of the Safety Action Plan to, I think, better understand what the scope of our future commitments will need to be to make installations like this. But just because there's a zero in that for future years doesn't mean that the funding won't be there in place for future years.
Thank you. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee. I'm a big fan of the program. The few streets that I've had move from pilot to permanent was pretty much unanimous consent by the neighbors. I did want to just express gratitude about the Salem Street. I'm not sure if the mayor was there, but Dr. Dreik, Chief Miller, Lieutenant Tucker, several parents of the Salt and Stall students. We stood in the corner of Lafayette Place and Salem Street for about 40 minutes watching people avoid Lafayette Street as a cross-through, people doing U-turns right behind the school. I know Counselor Hapworth and I spoke about this because, you know, he's had, you know, children there. It was unbelievable how dangerous it was. And you would think, even when we've had a policeman there, how precarious it is for kids crossing, just trying to get into school or into their parents' car. So really appreciate that. I know there's other stuff that we're doing, like turning Lafayette into a one-way, but it's really appreciated. I think it's going to make it a lot safer for the students.
Thank you. Counselor Gerislaw?
Thank you, Chair. Not being a member of the committee, I just want to thank you for all your help. You're doing a tremendous job stepping in Dave's shoes. You answer all the emails and phone calls in a very timely manner, and I appreciate all you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. And also I'll offer my thanks again to you and your department and for all the work you're doing. And I'll just check in with Anna. We're covered with everything we wanted to go on tonight. My list seems to be covered. Okay, great. I'll entertain another motion. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. We are adjourned.